Call the Tuesday, January 27th. Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Meeting starts at 9:16. Start off with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and is on Zoom.
This meeting is being recorded.
It's being recorded. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, my fault. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 64 for $366,620.25. Vendor warrant number 65 for $37,361.90. The withholding warrant number 66 for $128,211.10. Vendor warrant number 67 for $288,453.99. And ambulance commitment from 110 to 116 for $124,712.18.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Confused?
And then I move to approve payment of the following selectmen bills. Town hall electricity bill for National Grid, $1,486.28. That's all we got.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pass the seans. Ed's not here yet. Why don't we give him a few more minutes? Do you want to... Is there a motion to designate a single member of the Board of Selectmen for bills or warrant payment? Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, subsection 56. If we do this, it would just mean one member of the board would have to come in and sign it, not both. Somebody can't...
You gotta have an alternate?
Yeah. So I would move either one of you guys to be signer in alternate.
Signing payroll now as it is. So Ash?
Okay, I'll do it. Is that a motion, Troy?
It's a motion.
I second. Me. And then I would motion Troy to be the alternate if I can't be.
And then who's on second? Ashley, Billson?
Ashley motion. Troy second move.
And Troy second to be alternate. Troy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Um, maybe we should move to the COVID because we have some of the...
We don't have Ed here yet.
I know, but it's gonna take a while, so I mean, I'm sure I'll...
Do you want to talk about the water? Bill?
Sure. Um, we're just looking to use some of the APRA money for some of the things that are included in the upgrade project. There's a lot of stuff in the treatment plants that I just outdated. Some of the stuff, one of the wells had to be repaired last year, and they had to make some of the pots because everything was so old, they don't have anymore. I tried to get a few gauges last month, and we ended up having to go up and spend some money on like something that might have been replaced in the upgrades. Because the guy usually gets his stuff off of eBay because it's outdated and nobody has it. And there's just things like the filter plant won't run if we lose power. That place doesn't ever generate a... The office doesn't ever generate a... There's just a lot of things that aren't included in the upgrade project that we could benefit from.
Okay. I'm in favor of it. I just want to find out what the cycle is for payment from the county board.
Yep.
Is this the most you think that you'd use out of APRA?
Um...
Right now?
Right now, yeah. But if the cost changes, it's probably more.
If necessary, would you be able to do this in sections if they... Because right now the payment plan is like...
Yeah, I broke it down into individual things, so if we got to do one thing now, one thing a little later on, we could work around how they do that.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they... Sandy said sometime where they might reimburse us, so I mean, I guess it would all depend on how they do this, which is...
Okay. What's the board's view?
I'm for it if they can make the payments work with the way the money comes in. Or reimbursement if we work with Sandy on it, I think it's great. The water's been a big concern with people in the town, so...
APRA specifically speaks to using for town water. If you don't have any objections on that point. No, we're probably not the... If there's anything on this that can be done, not looking towards the future for having to do it again.
I don't think... I think most of it, once it's done, it's... Can be done now and not have to go on. A lot of young communities. I think everything in the plant's original from the late '70s. I mean, I brought a lot of commercial lawmakers in there longer than most people.
Longer than water has.
Yeah. They love that water has.
And I know, Bill, I think this is a faulty doing because many towns have been using APRA money on wastewater treatments. Certainly, if we're gonna hit it at the end of the cycle, why not do a begin to improve the beginning of the cycle?
Yeah.
Sounds like a good move.
So sorry.
The last time we met with you people, we told you we were gonna be doing everything we can to get it back up to where it should be, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
This will help us a lot.
I think we can approve the request as just to be a timing of when the funds are available, so... Is there a motion to approve the request as long as the funds are available?
I'm with it.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for the hard work on bringing this before us.
We're waiting on Ed for most of the other stuff.
I'm just looking through. Do you want to vote to affirm my signing of the fire department safety equipment grant?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do we have a cemetery deed in here?
Apparently.
It's in here.
I think only you have that. Yeah, you have it.
It's in the green. Okay.
It'd be in the middle of my order.
Yeah, they're voting in today, but it's... Yeah, for your... Okay, go on.
Yeah, you guys don't usually vote on it. You guys just sign them.
Okay.
I'm gonna move the ambulance abatement?
Sure.
Without Ed. I move the ambulance abatement from December 2021 for $69,445.63.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
There's a surplus, requested declare surplus, Dal Opti Flex 3050 2017 from Jean Block, from the library. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I guess we should talk about COVID.
It's gonna take most times.
I know.
That's what happened last meeting, too.
I think Ed might be a few minutes because he was picking up the boxes of some test kits that the state was giving us. Since they come from so many different directions, I get them, Jason, it's a book. Put down here, too, but we're getting some free test kits, so that's the bottom line.
Okay. You can do... Do you have an amount for the second one? To use unrestricted APRA funds to transfer the legal line? Do you have an amount?
I think we should do $100,000.
Troy?
It fluctuates so much, it's hard to decide which amount of money you're gonna put in. Either way, you put in, it's not gonna be enough.
It's a good start, though, to cover where we're at. We're already negative.
Is there an amount that you want to use?
Right now, negative 42?
Yep. 46.
Yeah, we put that more in. Yeah, I know that now federally, people have been able to order them online.
Yeah.
So that's a resource that wasn't there before. Certainly, with what's coming in, that's a resource that wasn't there before, so it's a matter of pretty much doing one spend on it. It's a high amount to pick, I guess, you know? You just have to say, I think we'd need some, but I wouldn't go away overboard either because you do expire.
Okay.
So Ed's just on his way right now. He got stuck there, so it's gonna be a bit...
All right, well, is there a motion for this one? Did you make a motion?
APRA funds, I motion $100,000. That was my motion.
Is there a second?
How much?
$100,000. That covers our... I think it's enough to cover what they're working on right now, I think, after talking about...
That's a fair amount.
Is that a second?
Second, Ed.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Mr. Chairman, just want to be noted that you're using APRA money for legal defense? That's my question.
I'm not entertaining.
You're not gonna...
I'm not entertaining questions from the public. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard, you just vote.
He's a department head.
Is this a department head meeting?
I'm not getting into it with you, sir.
You're looking at $100,000.
I'm not getting into it with you, sir.
Bob, did you have an amount that you wanted to request?
I apologize, I didn't realize that we'd run from this, you know, test kit thing. I would think between the board chief and I, you know, we just, you know, they have to pick a number, I guess. And, you know, three's better than one on this one, just saying. I don't think we'd need to go to the 8,000 mark that we were thinking of. Maybe 2,000?
2,000?
Lots. Does that seem like a lot? I'm just trying to think. See, the difference in the number would be if we have a lot, we'd have to do drive through. If we have a manageable amount...
So what's the bill that we're picking up for that?
It's got 30 cases coming, I believe, close to 100 per case, right? So around 3,000.
They're doing it, the schools now, too, though, right? So the schools are handing them out now, too, to the kids?
The schools are handing them out, too.
And we're able to get them monthly per household, so I don't know that we need to overdo it.
You know, and the price has been fluctuating. It started at 10, they could be up to 30 by now, even with, I don't know, discount. Maybe 1,000 nats?
On top of what we're getting today, you want to do?
So you want to approve 1,000 test kits, whatever the cost is, 1,000?
I know last time we were able to handle... It's a bigger strain on his department than it was mine, and it was holiday time, so we could stretch it out if we used the two buildings, my office and his office, again.
So you want to buy an additional 1,000?
Yeah. I think that would put us...
How many did we have last time?
Last time we had... So we had 1,000 kits, but it was two per household we could get, so it was 500 people.
But now we're getting 3,000 kits?
Now we're getting 3,000.
You're gonna still be doing the two per?
Well, it's still going two per. Again, the feds, I don't know how many people have already ordered some, but I'm sure that they're, even if they get them from the federal government, they'll be looking, you know, to us, so...
I feel like so many people came last time because it was right before the holiday time, so everybody wanted to test.
It was really tough.
And I think now they're handing them out, and the schools, the kids get them, what, every week or something? That's all any kid... Kids often leave and sign up. Yeah, if they sign up, the kids get them every week.
And they are available now at retailers when they weren't, but nobody's gonna spend $33 if they can cover them.
I would just kind of, maybe we should take what we're getting now, see if they go before we order more. And then if they do, then order more instead of ordering more, and then what if we end up sitting on some, like you said, they expire?
Exactly. If we, we wouldn't have to order them today, or at least if we knew the number, then let's say that if we wanted to pull the trigger on any day, then we could always reduce that number, but not go more than that number, and it wouldn't take a select board vote in order to pass it in just in essence of time, sort of.
What's the total you want us... What would be the total, you think? Do you want us to vote by the number of kits and give you authority up to it?
I think 1,000 kits would be enough.
Right. I mean, I think we should probably... So the tests that we do at the fire department, it comes in like in 50 tests per box, but it's not the same type as the take-home test, so I think we should get some more of those as far as the take-home tests.
That's a good point. On that, yes.
Those come 50 to a box, but you only get one vial of the liquid that you need to mix, so it's not like we can...
Can't enough.
Yeah, and the model.
But you think we might need more there because you're testing all the town employees and all that?
That's the area of, you know, just to make sure we have enough of those, but...
And I was getting those free from the state, and as of yesterday, they haven't fulfilled another request on it, so I'm not sure if the state is still able to provide those to us.
So is there a dollar amount that you want us to approve, and you guys can decide based off of what test you need?
I mean, if you want to just, I mean, $5,000, set aside $5,000 to buy additional tests, and that...
When necessary.
When necessary, and that could be a combination of take-home kits and the big boxes of...
Okay. Is there a motion to approve a request for $5,000 from the APRA funds for additional test kits if necessary?
Moving.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That way you guys can decide what tests you need.
Exactly.
And we can hold off and not rush them off.
Exactly.
Okay. I know Linda sent in more questions.
Right, because we never really finished this because of the department head meeting.
We don't have all the department heads here. Do we want to go with some of this, and then when we have the department head meeting next week, answer more questions? Linda, do you think you have more?
So the, I, they're basically the same questions that I put forward last time, and I think where our department is just looking for them related to pay outside. Like, the department heads can have whatever discussion they want with you about what's working, what's not working, but like last paycheck, because there weren't answers, we kind of stuck Ed with like, you gotta give us an answer in the next two hours on whether or not people got paid. So I'm just trying to, with Pam and I are just trying to avoid getting in that situation again where we're following more of a policy versus deciding a case by case, because then we're getting people to come back, well, this one had this, and I didn't get it, and it's leading to more situations even, and we know we have another one coming up this one day, so these would help.
In defense of your statement, when I'm hearing from town employees, the first words out of their mouth is usually, well, how do I get paid? Not, what am I supposed to do? So I said, let's back up for a minute and start with, if you're sick, you're supposed to stay home. Let's keep that in line. How do you feel? And then, you know, so... I don't work the departments, but they probably have a very valid... More likely than not.
So the first question is, will the town accept or not a pitcher of a home test positive for COVID as evidence to reinstate use of sick time and/or pay for time out for unbenefited employees?
We talked about that last time. We said that if they, that home test wouldn't qualify, you have to go get a real test.
And that's what I thought you'd talk about.
And we had said that the fire department was testing all town employees so they could go there and be tested for free, get the paperwork from the fire department saying positive, and that would...
Or they could do a PCR.
Or do a PCR.
Yep. I just wanted to see if you could vote, vote to like yes or no, accept or not accept.
But we're gonna do a whole policy at...
Well, so the question is, when I read through that packet, that...
The state?
That states, I didn't see where it said...
It doesn't say home test or not.
Right.
That's why, in general, I, I think we agree, and I don't know, that's for all of you to decide about following the guidelines of the state. Like capping at 40 hours or $850, doing dependents and all that, but they never address whether or not you'd accept a, and I think that's gonna come down from what I'm hearing to the employer to determine whether or not they're willing to accept a home test as that or they want a documented test.
Because everything that they're mentioning within the regulations is based upon, you know, it doesn't say thou shall. It says should. That word should, so we certainly can never be less strict on any policy than what the state law or guidance is, but we can always be slightly more strict if we want.
So if we vote this today, we say from this point forward...
Okay.
How do I think?
From this point forward, that works for your department?
Effective today.
Effective today?
Oh, great.
Right.
So, you know, what happens to the people that have already used a sick days prior to this go? Who are still...
If they, if... I guess there's two separate questions.
There are.
Because one's for benefit employees, one's for unbenefited employees, right?
Right, and it's also, some of the people who have already used sick days prior to this, but would have a documented test anyways to go with it, and some would only have the home test, so right now we're just talking about the home test part of it.
I still feel that not seeing that it is possible to get a positive or a negative test for the home test, but has it been tested to the point where it's accurate as it should be?
Well, the problem with the home test is you're doing it on yourself, so there's a lot of room for error there that you could end up with a negative if you don't do it properly.
So it would be recommended that if you did a home test, then you have the option to go to, or should go to, the fire department for a test.
Or go to your doctor and get a PCR.
Because as you say, it's the same as anything, they can do it, you know, certain people go follow it perfect at home, and other people, you know, you don't know.
And some of those tests, if you let them sit too long, they show a positive or...
So we're always told that if it's positive, it's positive. My only fear is that I did read that some doctors now were not, like, they weren't telling people to get PCR if they had a positive home test because they consider those to be a positive test, you know?
Right.
But, yeah.
I think Ash is right, too, there's the timing issue.
In our situation...
Like, it's supposed to be 15 minutes, but if you let it sit for two hours, then it shows positive.
Then it shows positive. Yeah. We also have a situation where we have you, we have the fire department, so we're not, if they can't go get a PCR, just go to the fire station. We just approved to buy more of those tests, and that way we have the documentation, we know the test was done right, and we know that, you know, people aren't sharing pictures of positive tests to get paid to stay at work, because we can't prove that the test in their hand is theirs in a picture.
So from today moving forward, anyone that's looking to get their sick time reimbursed has to have a positive test from the fire department?
Or their doctor, or a CVS, like a written place that you can get a test. A home test would encounter.
Okay. For all employees moving forward?
Yes.
That's what I'm just looking to get you guys to decide.
I would...
Because Ash is right, it would say their name. Something from anybody other than a home test will say their name and say the test result versus if it's just a home test, we have no way to match them up or show that when they were taken.
And if there's people that were out sick yesterday saying that they had a home test...
Go get tested today.
Well, I would say from anyone saying that they're sick as of today, as the first day, the policy moves forward this way. Anybody that's currently been out sick doesn't, if they tested with a home test and said they're positive, we'll just leave them be.
And it still applies to both dependents and the employee?
Yeah.
Yeah, questions one and two together.
Yep.
Is that, so is that a motion?
Yes, I move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Like, if your wife gets just positive...
And you have to stay home.
And so what they care about, you have to show a positive from her. Because we have to take care of her. Yeah, I have a case like that, now the wife's positive, he's negative, and you use it on sick days, so you just kind of wait until...
Does that work for you, Jason?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that's the other problem is because now I think with the guidance, if you're, and this is why at the last meeting I said I wanted to wait for Bob, because I believe if you're vaccinated and you have a positive contact, even if it's a family member, you don't have to quarantine anymore.
Exactly.
But if you're taking, then the guide says if you're taking care of that person, then you are able to take...
Under the, under the legal, like a dependent, like a minor child, or as opposed to like a...
Or like in my household, I got it. I couldn't go near the kids. My husband's vaccinated, he could have left because he didn't have symptoms, but then who watches the kids because they can't go to school? So he had to be home to watch the kids because I couldn't go near the kids.
And as far as documentation to Linda's office and Angela's, is a memo, an email, is there a form that the employees gotta fill out to submit to them?
I feel like we should have one. I think it's gonna be easier for you.
We'd quite agree with one, right?
So how we have been handling it is if they listed on... So how we have been handling it is if they list it on their time keys as COVID time.
Yep.
Then they presumably, the positive result only goes straight to our office, because we file it right into the personnel file without anybody seeing it. Then we corroborate between our office and the health office, just to say like, yes, the COVID time, yes, we have a result.
Okay.
Evaluations, we say, yes, we have.
So it's not just a form that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
There's also the availability now of, you know, employees returning back to work for five days, six days, seven days, instead of the.
Ten?
Right.
Yeah, instead of the ten, I mean, really, seven's almost impossible because of the PCR thing that's there, but certainly the three to five day. There's a course of action, I think, that we could work on.
Right, so it's five days, you have to be out, and then you can come back day six with a mask through daytime.
As long as it's a well-fitting, properly worn mask, yes.
Because we had talked about this the last meeting, that, I mean, some people might need the ten days, though, because some people get sicker than others.
Absolutely. And some people can't wear a mask, but that would be an individual thing, and it's bad inside also. I'm not sure what our availability is on the KN ninety-five. We still have a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a lot of those.
With the police station.
Yeah, yeah.
So it wouldn't be a hardship or a cost for any employee that needs a well-fitting mask to get it uh, free of charge from us, but my office is, uh, you know, it's a good office for that, just to have on board for anybody who needs one to help support, um, their safe return to work in an earlier fashion. That seems to meet the criteria, I mean, two days before, three days after, your symptoms are going away. You should be good to, you know, to get back to work.
So, come back day five with no symptoms.
And a mask.
And a mask. Is that.
But, yeah, no, or, you know, severely, you know, diminished, you're so much squeezed, I don't want somebody to freak out so much. You had no symptoms. Sorry, it's squeezing anyhow.
Is that, Linda, Pam, is that answering?
Um, if you don't mind, you guys definitely answered number one and two, can you just answer number three and four? Which will be easier, actually.
Number three said, we talked about this last meeting, if you're exposed at work, we would pay you. If you're exposed somewhere else, not in work, it wouldn't be paid. Right? Also, that's what we agreed on the last meeting.
That's what we're trying to get a vote to. If, to the point that these guys made earlier, if you're vaccinated, you might not be considered a close contact anyways, but if we have an unvaccinated employee exposed to somebody who's vaccinated, and we tell them to go home because they're a close contact, I just, we just are looking for a vote on yes, pay them, because we told them to go home because they were a close contact.
So, yeah, so if you're exposed at work, then, and the town tells the person to go home, then yes, we pay them. Do you want a motion on that?
That would be great, if you can just go to model, so we can just have a seven.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, right?
Aye.
Okay.
And I think number four, we should stick with the state guidelines, forty hours or eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so we'll cap it, if you can vote to cap it at that, we already have people who've gone past the forty, so we just want to be able to save them. Like you had the first forty reimbursed, if you had sick time, anything over and above that, we can't reimburse.
Right.
Is there a motion?
I move it.
Second.
All those in favor, right?
Aye.
Thank you for voting this.
Any other things that came up in that sense?
I'm sure that wing could come up.
So, I, I, like, we had an input, so because they worked the two twenty fours, put that forty-eight out in less than a one week period, so the fire department might be a little different on that, especially if we sent, so I'm thinking of one particular case where we had sent someone home, and because she was symptomatic, which the person, the firefighter, didn't get a positive test result for two days, when she, she had initially tested negative and then tested positive two days later, so really she lost three days, three twenty fours.
But you sent her home.
Yeah.
So we automatically covered that day.
Yeah.
On the day that you sent her home.
So then, I guess we need to amend the motion to cover forty-eight hours for firefighters who have twenty fours.
What about for police, would you need the same?
We only work eight hours, forty is way too much for us.
Your guys want more than eight hours.
Eight's enough, eight hours is enough for us, thank you.
Is there a motion to amend that vote to add forty-eight hours to the firefighters?
To the fire department? I, I move that.
Second. All those in favor, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board be sending something like to the department heads, just to kind of summarize all this, so this question, Mike?
Well, we'll get it typed up for the department head meeting, I'm sure there's gonna be other questions right then, too, so.
Okay.
It's bound to happen, it's bound to happen.
I have my hand raised, I have my hand raised, can I begin?
Hi, Jean, go ahead.
Hi, okay, so, um, question, if I had, I have, I have two questions on two circumstances here at the library. So I have an employee who used twenty-five hours, um, COVID time, and she submitted a regular test from the doctor, and she had to stay home with her son, and then a week later, she submitted another test where she got it. She works twenty-five hours a week, so that adds up to fifty. So I don't know if I can submit fifty hours of COVID time for that to be in a situation.
So the state guidelines say it's capped at forty per employee, so it doesn't matter if it's the employee or the dependent, that's what the state guidelines say?
No, it'd be forty. Right. That's what I think.
So it'd be forty hours that you, she, the person would get reimbursed their sick time for? Jean?
Okay, yeah.
But then they'd have to use their sick time for the other time that they're beyond the forty.
Okay, and my, so my other situation, I'm thinking, is the same thing, um, that Thursday she came in and she was really sick, but she worried about sick time, so I, I had to send her home anyways. So, um, because I was worried about her being in the building, as she didn't feel well, and so she was on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday really sick, used her sick time, that was last pay period, and then tested positive from a clinic on Monday, and I'm looking to get that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, for the last pay period, um, reimbursed, just as, just reimburse sick time.
But she still only gets forty hours total, right?
Okay.
That's cool.
But we just.
Plus, I would caution that somebody could be sick, un-COVID related, and go home.
Right.
And if we don't do it from the, you have been doing it from the day of the test forward.
Right.
So we know it's COVID.
Right.
If you're letting people go home and then paying, giving them back their sick time for going home, and you, and it's not under COVID, then it could be any sickness.
And then people could go home and wait four days to test and then get the positive, yeah, so I think we've seen it capped at the forty hours, so we don't have any confusion.
So is this a new case point, Linda?
That one, yes.
Well, yeah, but I've been dealing with a contact craziness, because, um, I've had, you know, people who have gone to the doctor, they said, nope, it's the flu, and then three days later, they test positive for COVID, so even though they had COVID-like symptoms, on that, on that doctor's visit, it was actually influenza, and then, as it turned out, either turned to COVID, or, or the husband or sister did have COVID, so, I really think you have to go from the test date.
Right. We are going from the test date, but it's still only forty hours.
Yes.
Yes, but I think this, this particular situation was in regard to, they wanted to know, because they seemed like they had COVID-like symptoms, but they weren't COVID, they were testing at that time and testing negative, so I think to Bob's point, you, you kind of have to go from the test date forward, because it could be any sickness that's going on, we don't want to start to say that any sickness that might be in some relation to COVID is.
Right.
We're gonna give back time, or we're not gonna make them use their own sick time.
So, if, excuse me, if the department head sends somebody home, they should send them over to get a test?
If they want to get real, if they don't want to, if they don't want to, you know, if they don't want to use their own sick time, then they need to get a test.
Right.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, and that's a, and that's a test for the fire department, right, was she.
Or PCR.
Yeah, or the doctor.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully this will answer.
I appreciate you listening.
Thanks, Jean.
Hopefully these answers will take notice.
It's weird, right?
Same thing I'm dealing with everywhere.
Yeah.
We didn't think this COVID thing was gonna get easier, right?
Well, it's, you know, it's, it's not unique to hear these questions, we're in a, a ever-changing event, so, um, you know, as we move forward, it may change again, but at least right now, it puts everybody on the same page and.
So Linda, is there anything else you can think of that we should touch base on right now, or do you think we're okay until the department meeting?
Ah, I think you're hopefully okay to the department head meeting, we don't know until we know, but that's one of the ones I was expecting to come up as a question for this week, and now you've answered it, so.
It's great that you've been emailing us.
Is that a professional opinion?
Huh?
It's your professional opinion.
My professional opinion? No, I, I'll keep my professional opinion by myself, let you guys make the big decisions.
Thank you for emailing us, I appreciate you doing that as they call on.
No.
If anything else comes up, if you want to email us, that's cool, so we can get an idea before a meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so Ed, we're on COVID policy discussions, so do you want to give an update of where you, you were?
Where I was?
Yeah.
Well, I was happy to sign off for the town of Halifax on thirty-one boxes of testing kits. I could only fit three in my trunk, and the fire department was there to pick up the rest, so, but it, um, my apologies for being late, it turned out to be a big photo op for Plymouth County, there were four towns there, and it was, uh, kind of like old home week, you know, knowing the commissioners over the years, and, uh, you know, one commissioner now is a town administrator in Holbrook, so I was able to call him rookie, uh, because he just started a couple of months ago, and then, of course, you know, we, they were representatives, uh, our state reps and, and, uh, Jim Cantwell, who former state rep from Marshville, who's now, um, in Senator Barkley's office, I believe, and, uh, and, and it was a large delegation from Pembroke, so that was old home week for me, so, uh, but I was happy to, you know, to, uh, on behalf of the town of Halifax, accept those thirty-one boxes, and I believe they'll be at the fire department?
That's where they're employing them right now, that's my guess, yeah.
And I'll be picking some up.
Yeah, we'll let some up here, we're gonna come up with a distribution.
Right, we're gonna try to figure out best, best means to, um, we certainly won't do a drive-through Saturday. Depending, listen.
If you want to keep the test, no, I'm just kidding.
And so when we come up with a game plan, then we'll put that on the website?
Yep.
How did it work last time?
So it worked, I mean, last time worked well, we were, we were out of them in two and a half days, we had, um, you know, we're talking with Ken today, we might want to do some weekend distribution this time, because some residents felt slighted that they couldn't be here during the day, so we were hoping to, we'll meet with Bob this week and we'll go over with that, and, um, come up with a plan that's fair and.
We'll try to work a, a night, weekend, daytime.
Try to give people a little more options than just ten to two.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any other COVID-related issues? Okay, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three budget update, um, so the cherry sheet numbers were released yesterday, minimum contribution numbers were released yesterday, Halifax proportion of Silver Lake is going up two hundred and forty thousand, Kingston's going up two hundred and forty thousand, and Clinton's decreasing by a hundred and thirty thousand. So, um, it's not good news for the the Halifax assessment number for Silver Lake. I started running the numbers, and I just, you could base it off of the current fiscal year, which is an immediate shift of two forty. But they're talking about a million dollar increase, so you have a shift of two forty, then you have the percentage on top, so hopefully we'll have, uh, updated estimate from the superintendent from the meeting that we have on Tuesday.
Chairman, speaking of that, I was, I had a chance to talk to Tom O'Brien, the county treasurer, about Mayflower Health Group.
Yep.
And, uh, right now, the consultant is looking at a ten percent increase, however, you know, because they have their reserves, they're thinking about maybe, and we'll know at near the end of February, about what the executive committee is kind of proposing, but they're thinking more along four, four, four percent increase. So, um, it's not great news, but it's not ten percent, so.
Advisory board is going to meet next week.
Right, okay. I think the full membership's not gonna meet until the end of, when they actually vote on the rates, that'll be the, uh, the full membership, I think, at the end of February.
So we did. So now that we have the numbers from the state, unrestricted state aid was like twenty-eight thousand dollar increase, which isn't much. It was an increase for chapter seventy, for the elementary school, ninety-one thousand, so that will help. Silver Lake's increase, um, was not a minimum increase, it was, I think, three hundred thousand dollars, but then there's an increase of charter school tuitions, which kind of offsets. So. It's gonna be a big number. So we talked at the finance committee meeting about, um, use of free cash, talking about an override, talking about cuts, putting everything on the table, and using, possibly using stabilization. Then we have locations of office spaces, discussion on swaps or changes in building security.
Can I talk about it? We met last week, Scott, myself, Caesar, the chief, talked about different ways to change up mainly that closet office storage area. I don't know if you found anything different from your email yesterday than what we were talking about.
Yeah, so I was, I was thinking about that, if we cut the assessor's room, and now, like we talked about, that's really gonna hinder the storage for the files. And that little space that we create wouldn't be a whole lot, you said the files in here, don't we get access all that often?
Well, Pam goes in here a lot.
Okay.
So they do get access.
Maybe we can minimize what we store up here, and we'll move Will Corey into that room?
I don't want to put, I don't want to put him in a closet, the point was to have everybody to have a direct access door to a hallway. So by putting the veteran's agent in the closet, people coming in to see him would have to come through this room to get to him.
Okay.
If we're gonna minimize the storage, we can move stuff to the basement that doesn't need to be accessed every day.
That's, yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at, making that one bigger problem. I have nothing else, no other ideas at this point.
All we would have to do is move those two filing cabinets that we talked to to the other side.
In the assessors.
In the assessors.
Yeah, there's three of them, but they're fire rated, so they're ready. And underneath, in the basement, where they go, it's already, it's already narrow spot in foundation, so we have to add gracing under there to support them, because Will also brings his file cabinet in, so it's not just a three, it's also his on the back. If we have to add supports underneath there, that's gonna make that RA narrow spot really tough to move anything through. Then we'll split that room, we also have to split the, excuse me, the HVAC systems, and redo the electrical, uh, electrical, it's not, not the biggest thing, but HVAC is, is a little miniature. I got a guy from Little Gav, but he's not sure we can do it to serve the two rooms.
Okay, so if we can't break that room in half, what are the options with, where we're gonna put the assessor's stuff? And then we can move either Caesar into that room and leave Will alone, or we can move Will to the assessor's office? Because that's the only option for them to have a direct access point to the hallway. And we know a police station wasn't an option.
It's moving Will, depending on if it's because of the heat down there, or out of the office that he's in now?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The purpose for moving Will out of his office is because there's no heat?
No, we're moving Will to the office down here because he's not here as much as Caesar would be, and that gives him closer access to the front door. We actually walked Will through the whole thing, too, he was fine with being closer to the front door. And having that direct access right to the front. But he's normally only here. But he's normally only here, I think you were saying, like, three hours a week on a Monday. Caesar is now here almost forty hours a week. So, almost, you should only be here forty hours a week. So that was the best solution that we came up with without disturbing the copy room because then not everybody has access to the copier, which doesn't work for all the department heads. We need to get in there and make copies.
We, Scott, when we looked at it the other day, we thought, well, another possible idea of putting the, cutting this in half. I don't know how much room the selectmen use for storage. And then having this part of the storage area and then putting a door on this way because there was some electrical and ventilation ducts.
To make half of this storage for the assessors, you mean?
Well, it's just, me and Scott were just chatting about it. And I said, well, could you possibly put the wall this way in that room and then an access door from the outside? And then have this as a storage closet for the selectmen's records? But I don't know, we didn't know, it was a two-minute discussion. Right, he's talking about adding a doorway, uh, instantly behind Caesar's desk into the hallway and then cutting that room in half. So now that, that office has access to the hallway. We don't know if there's ducts in the wall. We'd have to open up the wall to find out what's in there. I don't know if there's ducting or electrical or whatever. And we don't even know if that would give each, I don't know.
Yeah.
We were just kind of threw that out there as an idea.
Are you talking about putting all my files from the back room? Don't stop?
No, we're not talking about putting them in the cellar at all. We're talking about reinforcing the floor, cutting it in half so we can make two offices out of it. So you can still go through the back of yours to get to your files. I don't, I'm not trying to make you go to the basement every day.
Yeah, that is that little hallway between the two buildings downstairs.
Right, so we're going to have to look and make sure it works, but it seemed the most reasonable plan for what we're trying to do. Which, Jim, you could look in the basement with us.
And then we would see if it goes to Will's.
And then Will would go over in the front of the assessor's meeting room.
So you gotta get a cost on the HVAC aspect of it?
And then we'll, maybe Jim, you can come to the basement with Scott. We can figure out if it's reasonable to enforce the floors for those filing cabinets. And we can go from there.
Okay. Ed?
Administrator report.
Oh, is it town administrator's report?
Yeah, I put you on.
Sure. There were a couple of things. Number one, um, I believe that your next meeting, uh, will give you an update on, um, what we think the solar project's going to be on the cap landfill. And, uh, and the alternatives, whether it would be lease purchase, the, the facility itself, or to continue to lease it out. There's, you know, two ways you can go about it. So we'll have those options available to the board. And a second item, in, in talking about revenues, um, I was speaking with the town accountant about ensuring that one-time revenues go towards one-time projects and to try to free up, you know, some of the existing revenues, to help with the, uh, operating budget for FY twenty-three. So those are things that, you know, we're looking at right now and hopefully we'll have a game plan to present to finance committee as well. And then as part of the one-time money, I, I was, uh, given a, an email from a committee that went and examined the, uh, property at three sixty-eight Mon Ponsett Street, which needs to be demolished. And I talked to the, uh, treasurer collector about the, the status of that property from a tax title standpoint because I saw, you know, correspondents dating back to twenty twelve and twenty sixteen had dealt with that property. And so, um, we talked about having the, it go forward to, uh, to take the property, you know, for, uh, non-payment of taxes. And that, looking at what the demolition cost would be, talking to Jim Perry about the prospects of, uh, how much that property is going to be worth as a buildable lot needing to go through planning board ZBA regarding, uh, special permit because it's an undersized lot. But that would be a project that, um, the board needs to look at for improving some of the revenues, one-time revenues, you know, for the, for the town.
Okay.
So that's, you know, part of our homework assignment going forward to put together FY twenty-three's budget.
Okay. Thank you. If you guys are going to do the next one, I'll work here for myself.
Done, board. Possible discussion and associate member.
Do you have any more to offer?
Mm-hmm.
In your, in your packets, I have.
I have some of them the other day. Different members or the different applications.
You got to interview, um, a couple of different people back in June, July. Inside your package, Troy, some people that you got to interview.
Do you have anything you want to say about it?
I mean, I, I think, um, I think for some, there hasn't been a lot of public discussion about membership or anything like that. I think, um, I think a lot of, I guess I'm always speaking for myself because somebody else is there. Um, like, we were on the, the agenda for Tuesday, uh, then the meeting, I think a couple of hours later, planning on coming to the Tuesday meeting. And the agenda for this meeting got posted like right before forty-eight.
Right, because that meeting got canceled.
One minute before, so we weren't able to post an agenda for us to be here. So, um, I mean, I, I guess, we had written, uh, a letter to you guys back in September. The appointment process for the June, uh, for the new member, in June, for the new, uh, for the new term was really different, I think, than the, the past, um, which is fine. I mean, it's, it, you know, it's you guys' decision as to who that's going to be. The, I think, I think from my position, I think I share the opinion of what just from our discussions for hearing. I, I think there's, there's, uh, I'm not sure why all the changes have happened, I guess. And the, uh, I think we found ourselves in a much more contentious position than we've been in the past. And I think we're all trying to hopefully avoid that. And the, uh, and there's been a couple of times where either people had to refuse themselves or been asked to refuse themselves. And I, I know at our last meeting, Gordon was there, um, which probably, I guess, haven't set it up on the agenda. Was that we, if those two people had refused themselves, uh, we'd be down to, to four members. And for a special permit, um, you have to have four votes. And so if someone, uh, was, you know, predisposed to vote a certain way based on their personal relationships with people outside of the meeting or anything, um, that, that would allow whoever the petitioner was not the, the ability to, to never be able to vote. So, uh, knowing, we've had five members and two associate members according to the law laws forever.
But you haven't. You haven't had two associate members since well before two thousand thirteen.
Right.
Two thousand and fifteen was the first time, no, you still only had one and one vacancy. And then there was no board change at all from two thousand sixteen until this last year. With the associate members or the regular members.
And very honestly, that's because the selectmen never appointed anyone to those positions.
But you never asked either until right now.
We've never had five people interviewed for this one, or, or, very, very.
Because nobody's ever put out the application process to the town like I did to invite more people to come in and join these boards. So the new process made it so more people came forward to get involved. So that's why we, I asked to change what we did. I just want to be clear because I feel like at your last zoning board meeting, it was made to seem that this board was halting you from having two members, and that's not the case. Because you guys have not had two members for quite a while now.
Yeah, that's good to know. I'll, I'll be very honest with you because I, I think we're frustration on, I guess, my end between myself. Is that we, you guys have, have had interviews. You guys voted, uh, to not reappoint someone, which was the chair, uh, which is entirely your right. There was an awful lot of, uh, time spent on it, but not a lot of discussion about, you asked two questions. You asked whether or not they went to town meeting, whether or not, how they handle difficult people. Those are the two questions you asked. And then there was very little discussion as to, I think what your statement was, was you wanted new, new people on the board. We always want new people.
It wasn't really new people. I wanted to allow people to actually have their hat in instead of having numerous people wear numerous hats. A person who is taken back is our moderator, serves on multiple committees and is a special police officer. So when we have all these applications come in of people who don't serve on anything, my thought is, why are we not letting other townspeople be a part of what's going on in this town and letting other individuals be a part in all aspects?
Your tone is a little bit like, I don't agree with you on that.
No, I just feel like you're misinterpreting or you're making it seem it's not.
In our town elections, we have four percent of the town vote. Like, it's not like the zoning board or town boards are, are the only place where there isn't a whole lot of interest in town government. So, like, that's been the case. I, I am, I'm, I think we would have welcomed, any, anytime they fill out a, a talent bank form, they would come to us. We'd bring the people in. And just about every time, if they wanted to do it, we brought them on. I, and, and what that letter says in my personal position is, I appreciate the fact that you reached out and had people come in and interview, right? That, that's not the issue at all. I think the concern that I have is, A, kind of this, we've been getting a lot of the tone that you've kind of just given me. And I don't, I guess, I guess none of us know why that's the case. Nobody, nobody doesn't want somebody on the board. And very, very honestly, in September, we, we said, hey, we actually, to your point, we never asked, we've never actually asked anyone to be appointed to the zoning board ever. What we did in September was point out that there was a vacancy and ask you to fill it. Now, January, you decided to put it on the agenda, even when we asked if you were going to address.
We had it on the agenda previously.
Right.
We've talked about it a couple of times.
Right.
There hasn't been a agreeance on who the member's going to be.
Right, and, and, and that's a little bit of my personal concern. I worry a little bit, um, that you had all of these interviews. And, uh, I don't know, there has been no public discussion on either of your opinions.
That's not true. I just told you I discussed why I didn't do that particular appointment before. And when we had talked about this before, I had that same discussion and I just had it with you. I've been very.
No, you didn't talk about why you didn't pick certain people or why you did pick certain people.
Excuse me?
Um, I'm getting cut off, so I feel like.
Yeah, you are. Bottom line, what are you looking for?
What am I looking for?
Yeah.
I'm just here to see what the process is.
So they want a second associate member is what they're looking for. Or an alternate.
Really, honestly, I, I guess, me personally, I have two questions. One, um, I'm interested to kind of see what the process will be for an associate member, right? And two, I have no, very, very one hundred percent honestly, I have no idea why there is with certain people, um, a specific issue with the zoning board. And I would love for them, we've asked for people to come to meetings, I've asked, I can, I can chat with anybody anytime. All of our stuff is on YouTube. Like, I guess I don't understand, um, if there was a shift in tone. I worry very honestly that it's because of the personal lawsuits certain people have. And it's hard for me not to think that because I haven't had any conversations with anybody, nor has there been a lot of discussion. You guys will come out of an executive session or you'll come out of something else and you'll vote a certain way. And you guys have very little conversations going into those votes. So it's hard for us to get that sense of.
When, when have you asked the selectmen to come to a zoning board meeting?
If you go to.
And discuss with us.
If you go to any, so we sent that letter in September, right? Might say in that letter, come onto our meeting. If you look at our, my meetings, you can go back in the YouTube videos that are all up there. I consistently ask for people to come.
You haven't personally invited the select board to come to your meeting and discuss. Like, you just said, you've asked numerous people to come in and discuss why the tone. I haven't been asked to come to any of your meetings. I haven't seen any emails to the select board to come and, and meet with you.
So we've sent a letter to the board of selectmen in September.
Right.
You've done that? So what, I don't know what more I need to do. You're well aware that we're not sure what I'm doing.
You started a different conversation. We went, we were talking about the alternate. Now you're saying that you feel like the tone towards the zoning board.
Oh, right.
So that's what you were just talking about. And you said you don't know why you feel that way because you admitted yourself, you haven't spoken to anybody. So you're making.
That's not true. In probably four or five of our last six months of meetings, I've.
But you haven't spoken to these people individually?
No, no, I, I.
So you're making a feeling or how you are interpreting a feeling or a, a situation.
Yeah.
Without speaking to the people you're concerned about.
No, very honestly, I, I'm not around this building all day long. I volunteer on that board, it's really all I.
And I appreciate you doing, I, I don't.
So honestly, this is the first time I've had the opportunity to do that.
I'm just saying, I think if you're going to say that you invite people in, you would like to talk about things or you feel a certain way, you should back it up with maybe speaking to those people or inviting people to.
Here I am.
You're here now because of the association, not because of anything that you just talked about.
You asked me my opinion on the situation. My opinion on the situation is, I, I, there are some things going on with the zoning board that are being affected by the board of selectmen. There was, the associate member position has been left open. The process behind the appointment.
The associate member has been left open since like two thousand and ten.
Yeah, it's been in the law since nineteen seventy-six.
So you should have asked. Like, you.
My job is to ask you to fill positions on the board.
I just got on this board, which is what I'm doing right now to try to fill all these seats.
Right.
That's what I'm doing right now.
You know, end this discussion on this at this time.
Sure.
You're looking for associate member.
So we have all these people who interviewed.
I'm, I'm, whatever you guys want to do, it's your purview to do that. I guess you asked me what my thoughts were.
I'm not disagreeing on the associate member. I absolutely think you should have one.
Yeah, me too.
I'm not, I agree with you on that.
Okay.
I don't like the way it's being interpreted that this board is halting you from having one. I understand it got sent in September. There has been conversations about it. There have been motions, there have been things that fell through. It didn't go through the cracks as far as us not doing it. There just hasn't been an agreeance yet, which is why it's back here today to talk about it. So it didn't get however you're wanting to say it should. Obviously, there's other things that maybe our board should come to one of your meetings and discuss with.
Bottom line is, we need.
We need an associate member.
We need to vote an associate member or not. And if anybody in my, because in the past, what has happened is, the zoning board appealed the interview to first and made a recommendation to the board as to whether or not they were required a person or not.
And Troy, specifically to your point, that process changed without any notice or involvement from us. So I think the, a lot, and I guess the point of that, I'm trying to make in all the other stuff that came up, is that stuff has changed and no one knows why. And, and I guess, no one knows why. And the vacuum of information has created a lot of suspicion, especially since, um, the, a lot of members feel like the zoning board has been targeted for some reason. And I don't know why that is. And I, and honestly, to be honest, I, we don't, we recommended the person who has the experience in the board. But honestly, what we're looking for is to have five regular members and two associate members who get along, care about the town and have positive interactions with the people in the town meeting. That's job one.
We can't guarantee that anybody going on the board is going to agree with you. It'll be disgruntled.
I agree, no, we don't.
So that's something that we came up with.
Troy, trust me, I, we disagree all the time. What I'm looking for is for us to get along. Where, what, we want to be able to do the job that the town Halifax needs us.
Fair, firm, and consistent.
One hundred percent. That's it. And that's, I, I, my feeling from my position, I try and ask a lot of questions in our meetings, try and do that, you know?
Do we have anybody?
They're in here. I'm wondering though if we should have Pam follow up and make sure these people still want to serve since they interviewed.
Well, that's one thing.
And then we can put it on our next agenda to, um, nominate.
It's fair enough. We'll, we'll make phone calls and see whether those people still are attending.
Yeah.
And it'll be on the next agenda.
I, I think we're, we're more than willing to, to help. Like, we're more than willing to offer insight. I, I think we're all kind of caught off guard. It might have been the. It might have been the, the fact that you wanted to open up the staff, and we just hadn't, didn't have that conversation back in June.
Right.
But without that information, and you guys making that decision, it's, it, and it's, we've had contentious conversations, and I don't know why. Like, I think that's why that's the case. And if we, and if we're not doing something correctly, I think we all want to know that.
Well, we're all here to serve the people of town Halifax. You know, personal feelings should not lie there.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think if you have a minute after this, we have an executive session that I have an update on, that maybe you can bring back to the zoning board.
Sure. Is that soon?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need to move into executive session with Board of Assessors. Naomi is waiting for us.
Gotcha. So we're going to come back out and finish that?
Yeah, so it needs to be a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
To discuss, to meet with the Board of Assessors to discuss Halifax Solar versus Halifax tax abatement cases, and Walmart versus Halifax tax abatement case.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ashley?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we're back in open, it's 11:15. Follow up on building security.
I saw the locks were changed.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
Getting started. Supplies are limited, the locksmith just called over in the hallway.
How was it, going with the keys?
Uh, good, they're just, they're running behind cutting them, so he's not coming today to put more, more in. So he'll be here on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, definitely, we won't be using locks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for that.
So I guess for the building security aspect, we need to put in an article for the capital plan, for camera system that you guys had been discussing.
Yeah, I think she's just going to, yeah, the article.
You're going to talk to it at the meeting, too?
Yep.
I guess, if I'm asked. I mean, I'm a department head, so technically I can't.
Well, anybody can put an article.
If I'm asked.
Yeah.
By you guys.
Yeah. I mean, I know you don't love to talk at home.
So we need an article for this building, and then we need an article for the camera systems that you guys are looking at the other buildings. If you can get them both in for this fiscal year, good. If not.
Are we?
Take down a good one at a time.
One building at a time.
Well, we'll, when we get, when we get the proposals for all the, the buildings, we'll have different variations of how to implement them. And then they can decide how they want to forward, recommend who.
All right.
Maybe we should leave that up to the finance committee, I give them, you know, here's the total amount, and here are the different variations based on the priorities, priorities that we've identified for where we need them. And then they make the recommendations as easy fit. I, I, are we not using our before this building anymore? Is that going to article now?
It depends on what the system is.
Okay, so you're still waiting for the price. I do have that, we're just awaiting, I requested additional pricing options.
Okay.
That will be more budget friendly in the long term.
Okay. Scott made, like we talked about with the, playing with the locksmith to move forward, that hits not only security, but ADA.
What about the elevator? We touched on that, never circle back.
Yep, so he came today to do the monthly inspections. The, he brought a key switch with him. It's going to be simple enough to solve, beginning the wrong one. So.
Okay, well, that's good, though.
He's going, he's hoping to come back next week, put it in. He said it's going to be easy enough.
So is that to restrict access to the basement?
Right, and then the locksmith, he adding a locked knob to that door, so you don't need a key to get to the basement.
Perfect.
They won't be key alike, because it won't fit in the elevator cabinet.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, I didn't miss.
And then we'll talk with Jim. I guess that we'll have to still build things security, but just to follow back to where's any of changing of the offices. We'll touch base with Jim, look in the basement and all that stuff, see if we can enforce.
Yep.
Is there?
I'd also like to get his take. He's looking into locking the doors between offices, whether they can be done or not, whether that's a problem, you know, I worry for you guys.
Okay.
Because if you have a key to one office, basically, you have a key to that side of the, the wing.
And the door in Irma's office, too, like, you can just go through the.
The one that goes to the basement.
And go, oh, go, look at the basement.
Top to bottom.
I thought it only came to, yeah, so what do we get about that door up there?
So that, that one, we'll have to, have to talk to, you know, with lock from the outside, it would still act as an exit from the inside.
Yeah, because you want them to get out.
Right, but it would still work that way, because it wouldn't be locked from the inside.
Okay, perfect.
We could, I don't know what the possibilities, we could just look at during, you know, the off hours or until it's needed, locking the grid hall.
No.
But that would, that would be the only way to prevent.
That's just trying to look in the butt, and then we have too many doors, too many meetings, everyone kind of.
Well, that would be the only way to prevent them from going through the stage.
Well, like, if we just lock it from the outside, it still acts as being able to go in and through, I think that one.
You're talking to Irma's office.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the basement.
So you've got a plan to go forward with the locksmith? Were there any other security things that we can talk about in open for other?
Do we get the camera for our?
I don't think you want to.
Okay, all right, we'll talk about that later.
I was asking about leaving this room unlocked.
Yep. I think once we get the keys, that's not a problem, because Pam made it so we could lock the cabinets in here. I had to do your key here midnight. But yeah, I don't, do you have a sure it's being opened out, we can lock the cameras?
Cool.
And then once we move the other office out, that will, we're working, yes, eventually, that's where we want to be.
Um, I did want to ask, I can sit down with Ed later today, if he has time, to actually put in the restrictions that we talked about for town hall employees.
Oh, yeah, that, I don't know if that's a.
I think you want to talk to, on that.
Oh, yeah. Is that something that we're still going to be doing?
Yep.
All right, I'll talk to Ed when he's.
Okay. Is there any other buildings, security wise? Yours is fine.
Yeah, I knew, it's like, part of this, the plan we talked about, the library, Wardle, Wardle, Wardle Department, the highway, and then the pumping stations, right?
Uh, highway did include the fuel, on the fuel station, for the, for their cameras. There are buildings, I know it's, we're, we're talking specifically video surveillance, but there are some buildings, particularly highway.
I think you want to keep discussions on those things in executive.
Well, what I was going to say wasn't any issues, I was just going to say they, they're interested in other physical controls. So that may or may not be requested, not the issue, so.
Good. All right. And then the other item was, you wanted to talk about the interactive displays. And how does that work with wiring and Scott, while Scott's here?
Yeah, um, so I do have a, uh, well, I have a price for the interactive display, and then there's, there's another price if we needed something in between, depending on when Scott goes through putting that TV up on the front, while I'm sitting in something in the interim, while that gets delivered, and I'm not sure if it's in stock right now. The total cost for that interactive display with an embedded computer in it, so it can be rolled around, ease of use, and protect the wireless, and have wired option if necessary, is fifty-three hundred dollars. And then, um, I priced out what it would cost to get an additional TV screen, to replace that one in the interim, so you guys can continue doing the hybrid meetings. And that came out to about a thousand dollars for the TV.
What if we have all of a meeting right now? Because right now, we're kind of looking at the two rooms, because everybody's supposed to be meeting in the two rooms.
So, right now, and I will, and I'm going to talk to the COA director, Darlene. What we did for conservation, we needed a last minute, I just asked if I can borrow the TV setup that we made over there for them, to accommodate that. My hope is that once that interactive display comes, we would then use a TV we would buy for that interim to cover that overtime.
Right, so you'll be able to run two meetings at once?
Yes, so without having to buy two TVs, run two meetings in the interim, I'm going to request, I'm going to talk to her and see if there's a way we can maintain that here until we get the interactive display. And then have that second TV used as, you know, the overtime option. But like I said, I, I would, I would suggest we spend a, you know, relatively cheap amount of money on another TV, just to continue doing it in the interims. That way it doesn't hold the building maintenance department from putting that in, and actually getting the digital signature.
Scott, do you, do you want to mount that one, or do you want, if we're going to buy another one to replace it, does it make more sense to have you?
Doesn't matter, it's a brand new one or that one, as long as it mountainizes, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
Oh, and that total is, um, that being about an extra thousand, so it would be fifty to sixty to be accurate.
What's your ETA, you think, on Mountainite TV?
Uh, we currently have a full staff, which is nice, so we get probably about a, a week of catch up, and then I can probably get on that.
Okay. Why don't we put that decision on next week's? And whether or not to buy that or not?
To buy.
To talk about the interactive display and the TV.
We messed a couple of things, the memorandum, we didn't do, come out in the Commonwealth, site plan.
Um, are you guys doing the rest of the public session right now?
Yes.
It's not on Zoom.
Yeah, we are. That's why we've been in the public session the whole time.
Yeah, but you guys are still in the executive session meeting, I just didn't, I thought we were doing this quick. So can you guys give me, like, two minutes, so I can make the switch?
You are recording on Area 58, though, right?
Yes.
All right.
I've been checking down, I guess, I know what we need.
All right, so we did Department of Health.
Thank you guys, go ahead, we ready?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
How's somebody?
Yeah, we need to talk, do we need to talk about contract negotiations?
Not at this point now.
Okay.
So which year, so you had a meeting scheduled for next week?
At 10:00. The one that I sent you with, with Kathy. I sent the email to Josh, I didn't get a response. All right.
That's the first?
The Tuesday at 10:00. Post that now, yeah.
So that's with, uh.
With.
State rep.
State, yeah.
Senator, right?
Yeah, Senator, Senator Brady, Kathy Linat, Rep. Kathy Linatra, and.
Josh.
Ed suggested inviting Josh, because he's going to take over one of the precincts. So I forwarded the email to him.
And all three of them were there this morning.
I made two state reps in one time.
So we talked about that. So I'll, let me get back to them just to make sure.
Okay.
Because I, I went, yeah, but they're not planning on meeting, but then, okay, it's a special meeting, da, 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 so.
So I invited Jill to that meeting.
Yep.
Paula was on the finance committee meeting, she said that she would try to make it. Paula's the chair of Civil Lake. I, I think the discussion on that meeting will be focused on the budget. So I guess I would put down FY '22, FY '23.
FY '22.
And FY '23 budget discussion with state legislators.
So is assessments going up and going down?
Based on sales, sales is still crazy, crazy.
Okay, so now we've got memorandum on inequity on the reimbursement by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for out-of-district vocational transportation. This kind of. We do, we do receive the regional transportation, so they're kind of attacking that. So we do, we cover the cost of vocational, I, I don't think we want to sign on to this, just. This is talking about taking away funding from the regional side, I think. I don't think we can afford that.
No, I, I had gathered an email, and I saw vocational transportation, like, we're helping self-transportation. So a pass on the pass plan.
You guys should, if you have any comments, let the planning board know. We received a memo saying the Division of Halifax meets the requirement, Massachusetts, uh, general law, chapter forty, section six. That's the districts for the voting. And then, future meeting times. So, does the board want to continue to meet at, on Tuesday nights at 6:30, or would an earlier time? Well, it'd be 6:45 for the next five weeks, six weeks. Does earlier times work better?
Well, it does for me. It's a board's decision.
Would you rather do it four, four o'clock work on Tuesday? Is that the higher?
I could do whatever, sure, so whatever is here for you. I know these meetings can get really late on Tuesday nights, and I end up sitting here until 10:30, so. If you want to do it four o'clock instead, to that, you're home for dinner, I'm okay with that.
Trying to agree.
All right, so we'll, we'll do fours. While we're going through the, I think we're going to have a decent length of meetings coming to the budget discussion.
Yeah, thanks, I do.
Have the finance committee, did they meet, did they like to decide whether or not they were level funding accounts?
Uh, they met, and I basically went over the five lines with them that are killing the budget, basically. And they haven't, they haven't gone through all the departments yet, because they're still waiting for the minimum contribution numbers, so. Technically, Civil Lake doesn't present their assessment number until they have their meeting to present to their members. So it'll just be an estimate, because I won't have their exact numbers.
Yeah, because I tried to zoom in on their meeting, and every time I dialed the number, it would all fail. They'd bring a couple of times, and boop, gone for seven times.
Maybe we can get you a different solution.
Yeah, I have to meet it at my house.
All right.
We can do that.
I like that idea. Do you bring snacks?
They're already there.
One thing that got passed over, Gordon, in the town administrator report was.
I had left the, you just, but you, you came in.
About the secretary, the recording secretary.
So, so I was going to recommend that we vote to allow Ed and Pam to do the. So, so I was going to recommend that we vote to allow Ed and Pam to do the interview.
They did. They did the interviews. They found somebody. They're asking for a grade two step three instead of a grade two step one because she already does Kingston Elementary and Halifax Elementary, or has done Halifax Elementary meeting minutes, so she has the experience to do so. So it's sixteen.
So is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
My second.
Alright, that's all in favor, aye. So then you still need to get Finn come to vote that.
Exactly. So I'm going to do a memo.
Okay.
I'm gonna get it to Linda so that she can do it for her meeting.
She's going to be meeting Monday.
I know, so I, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, is there anything we don't? Do you guys need to go into executive for anything? Did you approve the meeting minutes?
So I motioned to go into executive session, to approve executive session meeting minutes, to where we will not, well, adjourn from there, so we won't come back in a regular session either.
You don't go into executive sessions and vote on these?
You don't?
Well, if you, if you're gonna amend them.
Oh, okay. So if you're not gonna amend them, we can just sign them under. Well, hold on, Troy's just- Do you want to go into executive session meetings or do you want me just to motion to approve the two executive sessions?
To approve.
So you motion, are you motion to approve?
So withdraw that.
Yeah, I go to Tim, yeah, yeah, honey.
Motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes, 7:23. Five motions.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, I'm aye.
Aye.
I recuse. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
No?
Yes, there's nothing else. There's nothing else. I motion to adjourn. Thank you.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.